Okay, I entertain a motion to open.
Motion open. Then I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Barry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And J.R. Colby, yes. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Tracy Blaistown, Administrator?
Yes.
Julie O'Brien, Executive Administrator?
Yes.
Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
John Lucy, Chief of Police?
Yes.
And Lisa Mead, Town Council?
Yes.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Newbury Select Board is being conducted virtually consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. And posted on the town's website, allow public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The Newbury Select Board is convening by Zoom meeting. Link is posted on the agenda on the town's website. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the website. And the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on the website. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. They conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions when your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you, and be sure to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. The chairperson or vice chairperson will afford the public comment for a period of three minutes, and will be granted as follows. Patient will be sought through the raise hand function. Video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Have your cursor in this area if you don't see it. A participants window will open and display on the right. On the bottom of this participant area, you will see the list of phone and video participants, and on the bottom, you will see the ability to click on a button to raise hand. Your name is displayed. You may rename by using the more function next to your name. Telephone participants can use their phone's keypad while in a Zoom meeting to raise hand by hitting star sign. Those who have requested to be heard through the raise hand function will be heard in the order of which they are listed, in order by whom first hit the raise hand function. Please identify yourself by stating your name and address, and then you can make a comment. You will be unmuted. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. We will continue down the list of those in the raise hand column. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote.
All right, now that we got that out of the way.
Communications from citizens. Do we have any raise hands?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
We do. I said Jim Stewart had raised his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hang on, we'll get you unmuted.
Can you hear me?
But?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chairman and the Select Board, my name is Jim Stewart, and I reside at 22 Old Point Road out on Plum Island. And speaking on behalf of myself and other neighbors in the area of 12th and 14th Street, I would like to present a few quick comments on the alternative egress path along 12th, if I may.
I, yes. But we have a, the first thing we're going to get to tonight is the access route, and just bear in mind, you have about three minutes, so.
Yep, this will be quick. First, we are grateful for the time and resources applied to evaluating an alternative that we believe will be better in many respects to 14th Street. And we do support an alternative on the 12th Street side. We have some initial feedback on the new plan as presented thus far, which is clearly not detailed out yet, which we have submitted to the board and the applicant today by letter. Without going into those details, that said, we look forward to the opportunity to review detailed plans as they become available, and would welcome the opportunity to discuss our feedback with the applicant and others involved in the planning process in pursuit of a plan that has the best outcome for the community and everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Okay, any other raised hands, Tracy?
I do not see any. Martha, do you see any? Just tag teaming here. Nope, no, I don't.
Okay, now we'll move on to the.
Oh, wait. Leslie Matthews, Mr. Chairman, has just raised her hand.
Leslie?
Good evening. I just had a quick inquiry on if we will be resuming the Select Board on our Saturday morning coffees that were very successful and very informative, so that we can have a precise discussion with the different members of the board.
Don't all jump at once.
Jeff, yours was excellent.
Excellent. I don't know, I guess it caught everyone off guard because no one else responded, and I'm responding now. I mean, I have no problems sometimes with those Saturday. If it becomes repetitive, I mean, we had good conversations, but it seems if I tuned in, some of the same conversations were the same conversations that we were having with the next person that was up. So, it'd be nice if I.
The only person we didn't hear from was the chairman, and I think the constituents here in town would love to have a discussion to ask questions of the chairman and to have a live response, so that we can eliminate maybe these questions from the Select Board's meetings.
Well, you know, Leslie, you can always reach out to me directly if you have any questions. That goes for any citizen. I guess I agree with Jeff, the coffee hours, you know, the first couple, you seem to hit on some topics, and then after that, everyone kind of fizzles out, and you're sitting there with, you know, the same one or two people talking about the same things over and over. So, something we've done a couple times.
So, Mr. Chairman, when I did, when I did my coffee hour, I actually, I was there alone. So, I think, Leslie, you popped in about 20 minutes into the meeting, and you had nothing, you had no comments. So, I think we can take this under advisement. Maybe we can add it to an agenda at a later date and plan on moving it forward. That's, I.
But I think that's a good idea, Alicia, and maybe think of, if there's any other ways of accomplishing the same things, like maybe every couple of months have two select minutes. If there's, let's see if we can devise a better way of doing it, if we decide to do something.
I think, I think the.
Is that back and forth communication?
We've hit our, we've hit our three minutes, Leslie.
Yep, thank you.
We have an important matter to get to, and it's snowing out. We have people we need to get home tonight, so we will take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
All right, we have the Plum Island Emergency Access Policy Amendment. This originally adopted on October 13th, 2020. It could potentially get revised tonight. John Lucy, Chief of Police, would you like to lead us off?
Sure, sure, I can give a brief history, where we're coming from and where we hope to go. A little while back, October 13th of last year, the Select Board approved a motion to look into an emergency egress from the northern area of Plum Island. The situation is, just to recap a little bit, if there's an emergency, a flooding situation, or any kind of an emergency in the center, the Plum Island Center, it, all egresses from the north on Northern Boulevard are hindered, if not completely cut off. There is a small workaround on Sixth Street, but it's too, the proximity is just too close to where areas are concerned now, so it's not viable. So, we looked at it, and just come up with some solutions as to what we might be able to do to provide temporary egress access, a gated access only to be open for emergencies, should we need to facilitate evacuation or transport from the island when access is hindered at the center. Originally, what, back on the 13th of October, what was presented was the use of a route that was 14th Street to 16th T, and then making use of town property for an access to bring us to Old Point. If you, the members that were on the board, you know, you might remember that route. We did a site visit on November, November 5th, this past November, and during that site visit, in response to some neighborhood concerns, and relooking at some different things, and just seeing, you know, what the impacts were with conservation, and just revitalizing the efforts there. We came up with a route that we think is much, much better, much more viable, in the use of 12th Street. What we can do is come off of 12th Street, there's a short span of doom that's obstructing between South Street and Sandy Way. If that was made passable, it's pretty much a straight shot to where we need to get to, to that access of the town property to get us out into Old Point Road, is what we deemed, the reason why it's so viable, it appears to be a much less impacted environmentally, much straighter route. The emergency access to it is much, much easily navigated. There's less turns, there's a couple 90-degree turns that were concerning with the fire chief, who I believe will be jumping on shore, but he just only used the leg. But we, the fact that having a straighter shot in eliminating some of these tight corners, not only is a better option for the large fire equipment, but the other thing you have to consider is if there is an emergency, whether it's a storm event or whatever it is, the easier it is to navigate for the public, the less likely the public is going to cause an obstruction, you know, whether, you know, they slide off the trail, you know, the road, you know, they get stuck, or, you know, trying to make the turns. Once that happens, now the egress has become not viable. So, for those reasons, and looking at this new option of 12th Street to Sandy Way, and then out to the town property, pose and hope that you'd consider is an amendment to the October 13th motion, and make this a viable pursuant.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Jeff?
It's, John, it sounds like this would be easier to maintain if it was a snow emergency too, for one of the big Michigans or something. It's a straighter route.
It would appear to be, yeah, straighter seems to be better on every level. So, if I was plowing snow, I'd much rather go straight. But, yeah, I would say that that's viable.
I mean, if the neighbors seem to have more fondness for this, the only thing is, is I go forward, I'll support anything in the initial parts. I'd like to be able to get down there and just walk it, you know, with you sometime. So.
Jerry?
Yeah. Good evening. Well, I think this is, this is a better plan than the first one we saw on 14th Street. But I do have a couple of questions. Chief, are you planning to go through the wetland? I'm told that that's non-jurisdictional, so the state would not have a problem. And that, when you talk about going straight, you'd have to go through the wetland, would you not?
When I say straight, it's a much more direct route to the town-owned big sweep that, you know, that'll bring us out onto Old Point, if that makes sense. I don't know if you have, if it worked in front of you that illustrated. But, yeah, so it's a straighter shot to access that point of the town property.
Is there any thought or consideration? Because I know where the, they call it the wetland, which is a pretty dry wetland. It's not clear where you're going. Are you going, at this point, are you going around the wetland? Or can you go through the wetland? If it's not a vernal wetland and the state doesn't care about it? Because that's not.
Those are going to be questions for conservation, I think.
Yeah. I really wish I could speak intelligently to that, Ms. Heavy, but that's kind of out of my wheelhouse, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, that's okay, because that, I was down and met with the neighbors last week, and one of the things that they're concerned with is not knowing whereabouts in reference to that wetland it's going to go. So, I mean, they're asking for more definite plans, as you heard from Mr. Stewart. So, I don't know why. I guess you're looking to vote on it tonight, but I'm just not comfortable without a more definite plan. And also the fact that we received, you know, communications at 5:07 today. This has been going on for two years. I'm not, I'm not comfortable moving on it tonight without a specific definite plan to answer the questions of the neighbors down there. Because the first plan was terrible. It would have required one neighbor losing his deck and the other having water pour into his basement. So, this is a better plan. But, you know, the neighbors want detailed plans and answers to where exactly it's going, and you really could not read it from the paperwork that we received. And as I said, I've been down there, there's, you know, it's marked, there are blue flags, and there's orange flags, and even the neighbors aren't sure whereabouts it's going to go. So, they want those questions answered.
I think, I might, if I'm not mistaken, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, the process now is to pursue those plans. The process now is to start the process of bringing forth, you know, the public to have their voice with conservation. There's a lot of other steps after this, and I, and I believe your concerns would be answered during that process. This is the kickoff to the process to looking at and putting the plans together for this, for this arrangement, I believe, and somebody can.
Yes.
Tracy, is that?
Mr. Chairman, Town Council Lisa Mead has her hand.
Yes, Lisa?
Oh, there she is, okay.
I just want to address a couple of questions, Chief. I'm going to try to bail you out a little bit, but I can't entirely. So, the proposed road does not go through the depression, I believe, which is what you're referring to, Ms. Heavy. It does not go through it, it goes right on the edge of it. And so, you'll see those plans when they become more refined. The second thing is, and whether that's jurisdictional or not, that's not my bailiwick. That's the wetland scientist and the Conservation Commission and DEP's bailiwick. And so, I'm not going to make a determination about whether or not that's jurisdictional. The next thing is that, in fact, the chief is correct. If the board says yes, please look at an alternative route, because the last policy was with regards to 14th Street only, then what we're going to do is go out, mark it out, so you all can see it more specifically, and also talk to DEP about it to make sure they're okay with it as well, and then amend our application to the Conservation Commission to start the public hearing process. I think that the chief would agree, and the board would agree, that in fact, the public hearing process worked very well. Everybody heard what the public had to say. We went out on a site visit, and it was quite clear that there was some, a different alternative that was available that nobody had thought of in the past. And so, that's the process that we're working on.
May I have a follow-up question? But if we approve tonight what we were given, Ms. Mead, does it come back before the selectmen? If there's, if we have a problem? I don't think it does, from what you're saying. So, that's kind of like going to the supermarket and saying to the clerk, oh, you know, when you hand them your blank check, just write any amount.
Well, actually, no, because this is the Selectments Project. And so, if the Board of Selectmen wants to come through, come back to them after we get more refinements, then the Board of Selectmen should tell us to do that. In fact, the addition that was made to the proposal in the policy is that the exact route of the second means of egress is still in the planning process and may be a further amendment due to neighborhood input, public participation, and the comments and requirements from public bodies such as the Conservation Commission. So, in fact, it's not, it is not in stone at all. But we need to know that we're going in the right direction, because this is a Selectments Project along with the police chief and fire chief.
Well, I, yeah, I like definite answers, so that's my. So, I think, Jerry, I think where you might be stuck, and I understand where you're coming from, is that you want to see, you know, you want a definite answer. This is where we're going to go with this. But that's not, that's not our bailiwick, so to speak. We don't, we don't know CONCOM, we don't know any of that stuff. That's, this is just the process. So, at the Select Board level, we start at the top with set, like, policy. And. Alicia, how can it be our project if we don't know where it's going? Well, the project, the project, but the project. If we don't know all of the plans and all of the designs. The project is going to create an emergency egress for the residents of Plum Island, north of Center Island, south. That's the project. Now, where that road actually ends up has to have input from the residents, from the Conservation Commission. And please, somebody, if I'm wrong, please correct me, because this is the way I understood it. And it needs input from all of that. We can't, legally, I don't think we can, we can do that input, because we're not the body, the Conservation Commission, that hears all that stuff. We're like the owner applicant, the Select Board that's saying that this is what we would like to do. And how we end up doing that could be very different than how we commit. I mean, it was 14th Street, now it's going to be 12th Street, and it may change again. And by the time we get through the end of all this process, by the time it goes to the Conservation Commission, and if it gets referred to the Commonwealth because of the wetlands issues, they may say no. And then we won't have any egress at all. And, but at least we've, at least we tried. Well, actually, my. The neighbors know.
Hold on for a second. I just want to read an excerpt from a new document to see if it sets any concerns at rest. I'm going to pull one right out of it. "The exact route of a second means of egress is still in the planning process. It may be further amended due to neighborhood input, public participation, and the comments and requirements from public bodies such as the Conservation Commission."
So, I just want to.
Jerry, please, give me a moment.
That wasn't me.
This is really open-ended, it's much more general. 14th Street, there is no specific route mentioned on this document. The intention of this is to get this project off the dock that it's been on for years. This wouldn't be here right now if I didn't drag it ahead. The reason this hasn't been brought forward before is because it's politically contentious, and it was easy to push aside. I chose not to do that. And I don't want to stick any of the neighbors. Mr. Stewart, tonight, very respectful, great input. The neighbors there aren't hostile, they want input in the process. And I feel that this document will give them that. As far as the wetland, we really need it to go through a process to see which side of the wetland it's going to lay on, and then there'll be more input, you know, as this goes on and gets figured out. But we really need this to get it off the dock. And I think any other way, we'd be going into it backwards of putting the cart before the horse. And this is, this is probably one of the most important things that we'll handle as a board in our time here. And I hope we never need it, but when the day comes, we do, even if we're all much older than we are now. I think we'll be all glad that we did this. Mike, did you want to add?
Yeah, just, if the chief is going to get some selectmen together, I would like to go on a site walk too, because I have not been down there for the new route. And I'd like to, like I said, just to walk it. You know, weather permitting, if you do, just let us know, and let's set a date up. Okay?
So, I did, I did take a ride down there, and I don't know what I'm looking at. It's all overgrown. I, I mean, I need some guidance. Yeah.
A walk would be helpful, I think, with the chief.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just, I'm going to have, my colleague and I are going to have to excuse ourselves, because we have a conflict tonight. I have another meeting at 7 o'clock. But I just want to say that the chief, the chief and the fire chief have done a really great job at trying to find the most safe route to come in and out that has the least environmental impact. And I think it's a great idea that the board go down and look at it, because it's an amazing difference from what the original route was, as Mr. Stewart said earlier. And so, perhaps to alleviate this discussion, the board can consider this policy, we'll continue to work on the plan, and maybe the chief can take you down to walk the road so that you can see where it is. So, you know, it's your project, it's the chief's project. We can't do anything without your authorization. We think we found a pretty good route, but it has to be fleshed out. If you want to go see it in the rough, you should go see it in the rough. But, you know, we're not going to do anything that the board doesn't want us to do. But the chief will take you down there, and I'm going to apologize for my departure.
That's, that's okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Based on that, I'd move to put this off until after we've had a site walk, where we can go and have the chief, excuse me, the chief meet us there and, you know, with the other Board of Selectmen. That's a motion?
I don't, I don't hear a second. Jeff?
I like that idea.
Okay.
So, I just want to, I want to.
Jeff's standing up for quite a while.
Sorry.
Jeff?
As I stated in the first part of the, you know, first part of the discussion, when I said to John, I'd like to go down and walk it. It's only logical we walk it. But I have a feeling that, and I would have liked to caught Lisa, where this is our project, we're kind of putting the project forward, the exact location to be determined as we go forward. And if the project, after working on it, is totally unworkable and impossible to do, we're not going to do it. So.
So, I just have a question that I want to ask Jerry. I just.
Alicia?
Yeah.
To me, we're going to need some momentum to go forward, to push the project along and get CONCOM and engineering and everything forward as we did before. And I think now, we need to probably, you know, we'll vote on the motion that Jeremy made, but we probably need to vote one way or the other, or we can put it off. But this project is still to be determined what is the best route. We're not voting on this route, because we don't know what that route is.
This document doesn't show a route, anyway.
But, but my question is, is, so Jerry, do you, do you not want to move forward with an emergency egress at all? Because it sounds to me like you don't want, it's, this policy sets into motion, the emergency egress, so. No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we owe the neighbors, who are affected by this egress, the benefit of knowing exactly where it's going. That's all I'm saying. Yes, I 100% agree with that. I do. But I don't know why there's such a rush, why we have to get documents at five, you know, seven minutes after 5:00 this evening. This has been going on for a long time. I mean. Those documents were received by the town today. Don't interrupt, please. This has been going on for two years. I think the neighbors have the right to know how it's going to affect their property. It's only common courtesy. And I don't know what the big rush is. I would like to go down there with, with the police chief and have him show me where it's going to go. And I know the wetlands and whatnot, and I think the neighbors want to know, excuse me, specifically, is it coming near their property or the other, the other neighbor's property? It's only, it's only, you know, common courtesy and transparency for government to work this way.
This, this method provides the most input for the neighbors. It, I don't know, that's to be getting lost. To delay it another month is to delay it another month, you know, is to delay it another six months, to delay it another year. If, if we run into a situation where we want this, or we need it, and it was a month too late. John, would you like to add something?
Yeah, really quickly, I think, just listening to everything going on, it might be a little bit of convolution with what this, what we're looking for tonight. Tonight, we're not, for lack of a better way to put it, it seems we're looking for a feasibility study, is what we're looking at right now. We're not locking down any plans or anything about where it's going to go. We have a good idea of where we think it should go, and that's what we can discuss. But what we're trying to lock down tonight, Ms. Heavy, is the feasibility of doing it and the necessity to do it, and let's move forward with doing something. It's about, the question I think before us is, is this access or egress point necessary? Not so much where is it going to be, but is it necessary? The where it's going to be is going to happen a little bit further down the line. We just happen to have a site to, I happen to have a site to bring you to, a path I can bring you to and say. We just happen to have a site to, I happen to have a site to bring you to, a path I can bring you to and say, hey, this looks like it might work out all right. But if there's reasons why it's not going to work out all right, the dialogue starts, okay, what, what else can we do? Tonight is about, do we need an egress? And about how do we move forward with making that happen? I see your point. I think we're stuck on the, what we're thinking is going to work. Does that make sense? It's not about what is going to work. That comes later. It's, you know, what we think. What, you know, Chief John Janver and I drove it today, earlier, just, you know, looking at it again, saying, okay, this is a jump-off point. This is a starting point. We think this is going to work. Let's start the dialogue on this. So tonight is more about, do we need it? And then later on, with the process comes, where's it going to go?
And that was the reason why I asked you that question, Jerry. Do you not want to even, even engage? I mean, you may not, some people on the board may not even want to engage in this conversation. They may not want to even, even try to touch an emergency egress.
I'm not saying that, Alicia, and don't-
Okay. No, I'm asking you, okay? I am asking you.
I'm answering you. I'm, I'm okay with doing, doing, doing this emergency egress. I don't have a problem. I just don't, I just think it's common courtesy, if you're going to affect someone's home, that they know what is going to happen.
It's more than common courtesy. I think the abutters need to be notified by mail and all that, but that hasn't started yet. We're not there yet. I think you're putting the cart before the horse.
And also, you know, a site walk is in order, and it won't, this won't be the end of our involvement. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of a site walk wherever it wants to go. If we have a quorum of the board, we'll just have to post it, even though it's technically a meeting, but that's absolutely possible.
If I may, as the chief said, you know, it's, why don't we just put this off until our next meeting? We can vote on it for our next meeting. In between now and two weeks from now, we can do a site walk.
So, but what do you want to vote on at our next meeting?
The same thing tonight.
Which is the policy, which is an overarching policy about that the board wants to put this emergency access. See, that's where I'm kind of stuck.
Just to be clear, I didn't say, you know, I, I didn't say put this off. I, I just tried to clarify why tonight, what we're looking for tonight, that's all. I didn't say put it off. I don't, I don't agree.
So if we put it off, it's going to just not, I mean, it'll just, like JR said, it's kicking the can down the road. And, you know, Northeastern comes through and that, it breaks through there, and there's an egress, and there's no, there's, there's no way that the people on the north end of the island, Newbury, all of Newbury, Newport, and a lot of our residents, they won't, they'll be trapped on the island.
When I, when I brought this forward, I knew it would be contentious, and I, part of the reason I knew it would be contentious is because this has been kicked to the curb so many times, because it's a hot potato. It's not something that wins people elections. It's not flashy and sexy. It's a, it, it's an emergency utility road. And I, again, this thing has been languishing so long. This starts our forward progress. It does not preclude public input, select board input. It doesn't do that.
Actually, it ensures that input. It ensures the public process.
It ensures the maximum input for the neighbors, and like I said, it has been classy, open to input. No one's denied that we need this. So, you know, if we can all work together, you know, I think this is a great jumping off point. And, you know, Jerry, you know, I, I assure you that, you know, this will still be a slow process, and there'll be plenty of time for conversation. I'm not trying to block anyone out. That's, that ended up right back at, at the way I want again, so we could have a more inclusive process and, you know, but also move along at the same time. I urge the board to, to approve this document tonight.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make one more comment? Selectwoman Heavy said that, you know, she didn't receive any information until 5:01 or 5:07. Well, that's not the board's fault, and it's not the assistant, any of the town staff's fault. The board didn't receive that information until today.
Right.
So if we don't get it in from, from the public, anyway, we send it out as fast as we can, but we didn't send it in, so we don't get it until, until today. Today is as soon as it can go out. It couldn't go out by last week.
I don't, well, I guess I don't understand why it couldn't have gone out last week, since we changed last week the hour to accommodate legal counsel to get here. And the document I'm talking about is the one that legal counsel made up for us. You know, we knew we were meeting at 6:30, making it earlier, so I just don't understand why we get documents-
Okay, I was confused. I thought you were talking about a different document. I'm sorry.
I'm talking about the document, the where, whereas, and, yeah, the policy.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Could someone refresh?
Chief Janver with his hand up.
Chief Janver, quiet tonight.
I apologize, I got a little late. I was on another meeting, so I had to jump in late. I'm not sure what happened before I got here, but Chief Lucy and I dig down this evening, or this afternoon, and looked at the new site, the new proposed site. It looks fine for the fire department. Actually, it's greater, it's better for us versus the corner. That being said, we'd make anything work. You know, we can work just about anything, really. But again, I didn't take that as, this is the final decision either. I think this is one of the options that everybody's weighing out. So, so we looked at both options, what I'm trying to say, and then they both look good. The straight one looks better. But we can certainly work with the one that is on the corner also, if we had to. But I know this is just a jumping off point, and I'd be only happy to get down with a site walk with you and go over it a little more detail.
Thank you, Chief Janver.
JR, one final point. Just one final point. If we do a site walk, do you think we should invite CONCOM and Planning Board, just possibly just to have the input to at the same time?
I would have to ask counsel, because what, what, what we don't, we would need, as far as all consecutively at the same time, I would want an opinion from counsel first, because-
Okay, that's fine. Just, just going out there.
Where it's not a site work, like a site walk for a project or a special permit, I don't, my gut is that we could do that, but I don't want to say that for sure until I get a legal-
Okay, thank you.
I'm open to anything. A site walk goes, I mean, it'll be, it'll be good.
Okay.
Jeff? Jeff?
I did pick up this information yesterday, midday, on the proposed site. It was in our mailboxes, and it was pretty well laid out. And John did put this pretty well, when he said the next steps. And I, and I could be wrong, but I envisioned this as endorsing the new proposal as a better idea, because going forward, like John said, and I'm going to read it, "Assuming the board endorses the new proposal, we will have a discussion with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, determine what concerns, if any, they have with the 12th Street route. Update our filings with the Conservation Commission, and proceed with the public hearing process." That's about as inclusive as you can get. And this was in our mailboxes yesterday at 1 o'clock.
I just don't want to confuse anybody. If we get out there and we lock the site and have CONCOM and Planning Board and-
We don't even know-
and everybody else.
Alicia, we don't know what the exact site is yet.
Right. We don't know what the exact site is, and they have their own process that they legally have to go through. And by calling them all in, we're circumventing the way the law is written, and the law is written a certain way to protect everyone, including the abutters and everything. And, and I just think that if we start circumventing the law, nothing good is going to come of it.
And yet, if we, if we approve something we don't know what we're approving, then we've given up one forum for the abutters and the neighbors to object.
But this is not a forum for them to object, because we're not taking public comment.
Well, it should, it's, it's their homes.
But it's not before our board's decision. It's not before us to decide.
All this, all this document tells us tonight is that we're in agreement with the notion of moving ahead with an-
With an emergency egress. That's all this is saying. It's not saying where. That's why, and I'm going to go back to, that was my question. Do you not agree with having an emergency egress there? Because that's all this is doing.
Again, it's like going to the store and giving a blank check to the clerk and saying, fill, fill out whatever amount you want. That's my point.
We have a motion on the table. Would someone like to just refresh that motion?
Julie?
Can vote on it.
Yes. Sorry, hold on one second. Let me just scroll up. Jerry put forward to, to hold off until we have a site walk, and it was second by Mike Doyle, to hold off making the decision and signing the amendment until we have a site walk.
Okay, discussion, any further discussion on the motion on the table?
So I do, I have another question. So if, if, let's just say we do vote to, to table this policy till we have a site walk, that will put this project, would it be put on the next agenda, so in two weeks?
If, that would depend on people's schedules, whether there are some variables.
Because, I mean, I, I just, I just, I don't know. I just want to see this thing stop moving. I don't, it's been sitting too long.
I, I-
I'm going to move to a roll call vote on the motion that's on the table. Alicia Greco?
No.
Michael Doyle?
No.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
No.
And JR Colby? No. I am going to move, I move to approve the Plum Island Emergency Access Policy Amendment, originally adopted on October 13th, 2020, which reads as follows. Whereas the northern end of Plum Island, Northern Boulevard, has put a single means of egress to the Plum Island Turnpike and off of Plum Island to the mainland, as the single means of egress is vulnerable and impassable by car accidents, fire, emergency response, storm overwash, erosion events, thereby stranding residents, and whereas the single means of egress was rendered impassable in 2008, 2009, due to overwash and flooding, cutting off emergency access to the population living on the northern end of Plum Island, which contains hundreds of houses. And whereas a second egress from Northern Boulevard, connecting Northern Boulevard to Old Point Road, would provide an emergency route to serve the northern end of Plum, if the Northern Boulevard Plum Island Turnpike section intersection is compromised. And therefore, the new select board supports the creation of an egress road to connect the north end of Plum Island with Old Point Road to be used in emergencies, and when the Northern Plum Island Turnpike intersection is compromised. And whereas the route of a second means of egress is still in the planning process, and may be further amended due to neighborhood input, public participation, and the comments and requirements from public bodies such as the Conservation Commission. And now, therefore, the select board does hereby recommend and support the creation of an additional means to effectuate creating an emergency access means of egress in the end of Plum Island, acknowledging that the specific route will be shaped by the public process. That should provide an alternative route for evacuation and public safety access to preserve life and property in the event of an emergency.
So moved.
Discussion.
I think, JR, I think if you really look at that, I mean, that's so open-ended. It's just endorsing the idea of the project. I mean, that's open-ended enough that we could build a bridge over the basin if needed to have an evacuation route, which, you know, it's, it's very, the route is not determined.
No, it's just an idea that we want to create an egress for all of those people. They need a way out.
All right, I'll move to a roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
No.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. Thank you, board. Very important.
May I, if we do, are we doing a site walk?
I hope so.
Absolutely. I think that's everyone's expectation at this point. And as setting a date, we should work with CONCOM, because we'll, we would at least want the conservation agent there. So, you know, we know exactly what we're looking at when we go on our site walk.
And can I ask that the neighbors be notified, the people that affects?
Oh, yeah. Yep. That's, I have no problem with the neighbors coming along.
Okay. Yeah, not only can they, will they be notified, I would expect if they want to walk along with us, they could. See, this is not before our, our board, so we can have discussion, I would think. It's not, we're nothing, we're going to, we can't move on it. So, I don't know.
Right, this is pretty much our piece, our voting piece of it. Okay, I need an authorization to sign this document on behalf of the board.
So-
Yep, motion to sign for JR to sign.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. That's good. Let's see what we got next.
Chairman's report. I signed the PR 21-15 for Julie O'Brien. Under grants, we have some donations. We have a state grant cares fund reimbursement for postage to mail out the 11-321 election ballots, for $1,112.78. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion made.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. We have a COA donation from Michael Lissa Stanton. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion made.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. We have some businesses, business license recalls tonight. We have Christopher Silva, DBA Barker's Barber, 89 Hanover Street, Unit 1A, dog grooming.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. Peter Abram, DBA by Coco, 12 Grove, Grove Street, Mobile Coffee Trailer.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. Michael and Kate Duffield, DBA Newbury Kayak and Canoe, 291 Hyrum. The sale of kayaks, canoes, and related items.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. I would also need authorization to allow the chair to sign these licenses on behalf of the board.
Motion made. Let the chairman sign.
Second.
Alicia, roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby? Yes. Chief Lucy, do we still have Chief Lucy? Emergency Management Director?
Can't get rid of me that easily. Yes, I do. I have the report here. You know, I'll just read from it. Currently in Newbury, we have reported in the past, since the last posting of the DPH, a week ago, 920 tests with the 20 new cases with kind of 14-day period look back. They're, they're indicating we have a 5.54% positive rate with those tests. That is down from the 5.78% that we had the last round. So we're heading in the right direction. Little, little steps, but we're definitely going in the right direction, which is good to hear and good to see. As of the January 21st DPH report, Newbury still maintains a code red, a color red status. So that's still, that's not good, but hopefully that's going to be coming down as well. The COVID-19 Unified Command Team is currently working with the regional emergency management agencies, area fire departments, and area health agents to coordinate the regional vaccine clinic. We're in the, we're in the stages now of coordinating that. We don't have anything definitive yet. There's so many variables as far as, you know, how to get that solidified. And it's, you know, the availability of the vaccines is, is a big part of it, the, in, in the, you know, just the venues, getting that all locked down. But that's happening, and so we're going to be ready for, for the next phase of this thing soon. These, they're still actively being, these arrangers are being actively organized. I'm recommending that Newbury residents monitor the state's vaccine location website. The link has been added to the Newbury Police, Newbury Fire, and the town of Newbury websites. That's really, folks, the best way to get the up-to-date information as far as what the locations are. It's very user-friendly. There's a map that shows where the locations are. You click on it, and it gives- that shows where the locations are. You click on it and it gives you the direct link to, you know, to apply, you know, to get on the list, to get your appointment for your vaccine. And hopefully, very hopefully, you're very soon, there'll be a new star on the map that'll be our region. That hasn't happened yet. Just keep monitoring and I'll keep you up to date, you know, as that progresses. And then we'll, you know, keep monitoring our websites, the town websites, and that'll get it out there as soon as we get it. And as always, you know, the COVID Unified Command Team will continue to closely monitor the situation and make adjustments to the Newbury's response to this emergency that are in the best interest of public health. And that would be my report, Chairman.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thanks, John. When you said we're going to have like a regional response up in this, up in this area, who's taking the lead on that? Do you know?
It's, well, as far as who's taking the lead, it's, there's so many entities involved with different components of it. So it's kind of hard to say who's taking the lead. And the, the region is, I think, as of the last report, seven communities, might be eight communities, that are all coming together. The final arrangements as to, you know, where it's going to be, the timeframes and how it's going to be facilitated is, like I said, it's so not nailed down yet because there's so many variables, but that will be happening. But I, we're involved, Amesbury Fire Department and Amesbury's involved, Newbury Ports involved, Georgetown, Deb Rogers and Chief Janveron, they've been doing an amazing job, you know, coordinating this, this aspect of, of this distribution and facilitating getting this clinic up and running. But there's a lot of people involved and, you know, it's, it's a big effort.
Okay. So it's pretty safe to say that it's not going to be administered by the Board of Health in the Town of Newbury for Newbury residents only? Is that a?
I, I, I think that it's safe to say that nothing's safe to say.
Okay.
Because it's, you know, it, it really is that much, the, the moving parts right now. It's like you asked me to nail Jello to the wall.
Okay.
I just want to quickly say, the emergency, the team for COVID traces were excellent. The nurses called, three guys at the house, followed up on how we were doing, also, you know, tracking down who we had been in touch with since we got sick. And they did an excellent job. So they're doing a real good job too.
Jerry?
Yeah. Is it, do you have a timeframe when you might have this Jello nailed to the wall, as you said?
I'm hoping, you know, what it's looking like is probably within a month, you know, is when we'll have some really good answers, you know, a few weeks to a month. And I don't know, I, I'm going to defer to Chief Janveron. He might be able to give a little bit more perspective on that with his activities. Is that, am I putting you on the spot, Chief?
I don't know. I, I think it's probably within a month anyway, maybe a little sooner. There's, there's so many moving parts when it comes to, you know, the Board of Health is in charge of getting, the fire department seems to be in charge of coordinating national clinics. The first one they had was, the first trial was a complete mess. And we went in, the chiefs went in and instituted an actual incident command system to flow all the people through. It was much, much better. The last, next to it, much, much better. Does not great, there isn't great. But I think, yeah, I think it's safe to say within a month. More than likely sooner, we'll know what's going on.
Oh, good.
Sooner the better.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief Lucy. Thank you, Chief Janveron. All right, we have an appointment to the Cultural Council tonight. Gene Anderson, January 26, 2021 to June 30, 2023.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heevy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. I would also need authorization from the, to sign on the board's behalf.
Motion for chair to sign.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heevy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. All right, we have a meeting minutes to approve. And I'll get back to correspondence.
How about the Town Administrator's Report?
Yeah, I'm.
I'm sorry, JR.
All right. What would you like to take first, Alicia?
I'm sorry. I think you're jumping around on the agenda. I'm sorry. You go. You're the chair. You go.
All right, we have meeting, meeting minutes to approve. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heevy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Administrator's report. You ready for us, Tracy?
Sure. I just wanted to report that we did receive some additional funding from MAPC, another $3,300 in grant funding that will be used to defray the cost of our public health nurses. And this is the first in what we expect to be three rounds of additional funding. So I'll, I'll notify you as each round comes in. They're continuing to provide grants for our, our contact tracing. The field work for our annual audit is now complete. The, the auditors have left the building and we're awaiting the issuance of the financial statements. We've got a draft copy. I think they, they circulated a draft copy and we're waiting for the final. Once that's received, we'll get that posted on the website, you know, to the various boards and committees. I may have mentioned to you before, but I'm not sure, the, we're going to be conducting a very, very comprehensive website review. The HR board has agreed to work with us and the managers to complete a thorough review of each of the individual sections of the website with a goal towards, you know, providing more information on the individual functions and what they actually do. So it's clearer for people to understand what transactions, you know, we had to go for what transactions to try and make it a little bit more user-friendly to navigate, as well as, you know, eliminating out-of-date and unnecessary information. So that will be getting underway the first of February. We have hired an inspectional services administrator. Kathy Brown has joined our team and she has taken over the position that was held by Gretchen Gerard, who is now the new Assistant Town Clerk. Gretchen is going to be training under Leslie Haley. We're trying to do some succession planning. And she is interested in seeking the elected town clerk's position upon Leslie's retirement. So that's under, underway. The IT manager search, the job description is being updated and reclassified. Interviews have been conducted and I'm narrowing it down to a couple of finalists. And we'll be checking references and hope to make an offer within the next two weeks to get someone on board. And that's, that is all I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any meeting updates?
Um, just a couple, I went through the Council of Aging meeting yesterday. A couple things that was brought up. They'd like, they, they're talking about grant money and they want to work with the two chiefs, the fire chief and the police chief, and coordinating grant money for elders, things like, Bill DeMile brought up a great point about there's a grant in the, one of the fire department chooses and they get the monies to install fire detectors in seniors homes. So there's a, I think it's a great idea to start pooling our resources for, you know, for looking for grant money. And the other, the only other thing is, they said there's, there were plans back. I, it's, anyone can, can forward me the plans for the Council of Aging space, the first recommendations. I, I haven't seen those yet.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not plans. We, we just received a.
Can that, can that be forwarded to me?
Yeah, we can distribute that to the board.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Chairman.
I, Chief Janveron.
All right, Mr. Doyle, that, that grant, we looked into the grant, and that's a grant to purchase and install smoke alarms and carbon dioxide detectors in elderly, elderly homes. I believe it's in the fall. So we're going to, going to put him to that in the fall.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
So far, thank you, Chief Janveron.
Um, so Chairman Colby, I, I have some meeting updates from the Rec Committee. So I've been attending the Rec Committee meetings. The basketball project is moving forward, the basketball court over on Central Street Fields. The bid, I think they put it out to public bid. Expect bids back February 12. And that project is moving forward. So I'm pretty excited about, about that.
Excellent. Any other meeting updates? All right, we have warrants. Vote to approve the warrants.
Motion to approve the warrants.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heevy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. We also need a vote to allow the chair to sign on the board's behalf.
Motion to the chair to sign on the board's behalf.
Second that.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heevy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. No executive session tonight. I'm just going to make sure we didn't miss anything. Anyone see anything we missed?
Correspondence.
Uh, yes. Good catch, Mike. Correspondence. We received letters from the Division of Marine Fisheries dated January 10th, 16th, and 17th, 2021 about clam, black closures, shellfish area closures, I should say. We get a little letter from Jim Marin, correspondent regarding the police station construction committee letter dated 1/6/21. Two Triton School Remote Learning Correspondents from Meg Alfoney. Oh, not from Meg Alfoney. We received two Triton School Remote Learning Correspondents letters. We also received a letter from Meg Alfoney regarding Comcast alternatives in town. We also received a letter from GUST Hinkston Company. Okay, we have no executive.
Mr. Chairman, regarding Meg's letter about Comcast, she was asking if, if we have, if the board, if the board has, has ever looked into alternatives to Comcast. And we have, and unfortunately, they're the only game in town. So Verizon doesn't want to come here. Unless you go satellite for internet access, Comcast is the only, the only game in town.
Okay, I think that's our business for tonight. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heevy?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Thanks, everyone. Have a safe night. It's snowing out there.
Thank you.
Night.
Got stuff done. Have a good night.
Good night.